Recording in progress.
Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the back wall of the legislative chambers, as well as on our website. There is also an external defibrillator that's available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we are going to move a little bit of things around this morning. We're going to start with the Board of Commissioners. We'll do a recognition and proclamation, and then we'll recess and go back to the regular order of the agenda. So with that, roll call for the Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yeah.
Commissioner Friend.
Yeah.
Commissioner Garcia.
Commissioner Morgan.
Commissioner Rogers.
Madam Chair.
Present. Under recognition and proclamations, the first one, please note that that's going to be moved until our first meeting in February. The next one is a resolution proclaiming the week of February 28 through March 4 as Douglas County Omaha Healthcare Workers Appreciation Week. And with us this morning, we have Lindsey Borgeson from Core Bank and Megan Conley from Methodist, and they're going to say a few words before the resolution is read. So who's ever going to start? Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Borgeson. My name is Megan Conley, and I am part of Leadership Omaha Class 44. I am also a nurse, a nurse practitioner, and a leader of one of our county's hospitals. I am honored to be able to tell you how much I love my profession of over 30 years, as it has allowed me not only to serve kids of Douglas County, but kids from all over the state and nation. In these 30 amazing years, the past two years have been the most difficult of my career. From the time my hospital organized Incident Command on January 31, 2020, to even this morning, this journey has been a roller coaster ride, and a very rough one at that. I'm not talking about the true devastation this pandemic has caused. I am talking about the impact it has taken on our healthcare workers. In the beginning, those who were in healthcare were celebrated for caring for the sick. We were scared. So much was unknown, and we were really scared. But through the unknown, one thing we did know is that we couldn't give up. People needed us, and it was our calling to be there for them, for everyone. This went on for a while, but over the months and years, something changed. We were getting yelled at, chastised, threatened, and even some endured physical confrontation. But we persevere, as we know people need us, even those who are yelling, chastising, and threatening. They need us. But we are tired. Many are leaving healthcare because of the way they are being treated. One of my front desk team members told me she couldn't do it anymore, expressing that she has yelled at too often, and she is starting to dread to come to work. And she's one of my very best. She is that person who makes you smile just by being around her. I haven't seen her smile in a while. Staff leaving healthcare causes shortages, which creates a cycle where there are fewer and fewer once dedicated caregivers to care for those in need. You hear this every day when they report staffed beds. This is the number of beds that have staff to provide care to patients in them. We could care for many more if we only had the staff. The maltreatment is not the only reason people are leaving. But in my role, I know this is one of the root causes of many who are changing careers. The pandemic continues, and this means issues around it will also. But something that can change is bringing back the appreciation for the dedicated, caring, overburdened healthcare workers whose mission it is to care for people in our community. Thank you to the board and to Commissioner Borgeson for your time and consideration of this very important initiative. I will turn it over to my classmate, Lindsey Borgeson.
Thanks, Megan. Good morning, everyone. I want to echo Megan's appreciation for allowing us to be here today. It's a real pleasure for us. As she mentioned, we are classmates in the Omaha Chambers Leadership Omaha program. As part of that program, we were challenged to develop and execute a community project in a small group. I believe we are joined by the rest of the group as well: Keith Station, Nicole Sekmanjelik, Jo Marinkovich, Jordan Hassan, and Jessica Strowman. As you've heard, our healthcare workers have shown up and put our community before themselves for almost two years. And on behalf of our Leadership Omaha group, we'd like to return to a state of gratitude that was seen two years ago. Our project is centered on kindness and offering a thank you to all that work in the healthcare sector. So we are proposing a week dedicated to healthcare workers. As Commissioner Borgeson mentioned, it is February 28 through March 4. This campaign will encourage people to conduct an act of kindness for healthcare workers in their life, display white ribbons, say thank you, or simply bring patience and gratitude to their interaction with those in those spaces. We will work-- oh, excuse me. The week will culminate with an ask of the community to join together by wearing white on March 4 and posting to social media with the hashtag #lightDouglascountywhite for healthcare workers. Additionally, we've engaged several local businesses, and they've dedicated to lighting up their buildings white or leaving on lights in the show of support, or working with local schools who are writing thank you notes, and in process of creating a PSA, which is going to be shared across various media channels. Ultimately, the goal is to make the community return to a state of appreciation and have that be visible for all that work in healthcare. We believe the support of the county would be an incredible addition to this effort, and humbly ask you to vote in support of this declaration today. Really appreciate your consideration and for allowing us to be here.
Well, thank you to both of you and your classmates for just one, bringing this forward for us to be able to show our support and bring back that appreciation. I'm sure you know, one of our colleagues, Dr. Maureen Boyle, reminds us on a weekly basis what the healthcare workers that she works with are going through. And you're right, a couple years ago, they were looked as heroes, looked at as heroes. And we need to get back to that because they're still doing a tremendous job, not only for those with COVID, but for all that they're treating in the hospitals and in healthcare in general. So with that, I'm not going to read the resolution. It's a lot of what Lindsey said. We will be also-- I'll remind everybody when it comes to that February 28 through March 4, that week, and the things that we can do to show our appreciation. But I do appreciate you all being here and with us today for us to be able to recognize this. With that, are there any comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
There's a motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Any other questions or comment? Commissioner Boyle?
First of all, I want to say I do appreciate this initiative as well. And Megan, I completely feel what you're going through 100%. When I hear stories from one of my ICU doc colleagues about how he has to help a nurse who just got completely railed by a family member, he has to call the family to tell them and back her up and tell them why she was right and they were wrong. Those are the types of stories that you just didn't hear two years ago. So families are sometimes blaming, saying that doctors are not using all of the treatments available to help COVID patients, and then when a patient dies, they're not taking-- there's no responsibility except on the hands of those doctors, apparently. So I'm seeing it firsthand. I'm not on the front line. I'm like second line. I'm grateful for that. But I hear my colleagues telling me on a regular basis about how things really have gone downhill. We went from heroes to zero in no time, and it's absolutely tragic. Most of us go into healthcare for altruistic reasons, and when you find that your efforts are not appreciated-- not that we need to be patted on the back all the time, but when you're actually feel like you're being reprimanded for your actions, it's really frustrating. It does make it hard to continue to want to go back to work. So bottom line is, I appreciate this initiative as well, and I think it's much needed. And I think that it would be greatly appreciated, if nothing else, just to acknowledge that really, healthcare workers are really just trying to do the right thing. So thank you so much for putting this together.
And also, besides Dr. Boyle, Commissioner Boyle, I don't know if a lot of you are aware, but we run a long-term care facility, a community health center. We have health services in our adult corrections and our youth detention center. So we touch a lot of-- or our departments service a lot through healthcare. And so this resolution is also important for them as well, for us to be able to show our appreciation. So again, we thank you for being with us this morning. And I do have to note how proud I am of my daughter-in-law, Lindsey Borgeson, for bringing this forward. So thank you very much. So with that, please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Again, thank you all for being with us this morning, and I will get the resolution that I have to you this morning, okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn out of our Board of Commissioners and go into our Board of Equalization? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Commissioner Morgan.
Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, January 11, 2022, and Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, February 1, 2022, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to our resolutions, D through G. We have no need for executive session, so the motion can include adjournment. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
One moment, please. Okay, thank you. Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll move to our agenda for the Douglas County Noxious Weed Control Authority. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item one, approval of the minutes of the Noxious Weed Control Authority meeting held Tuesday, January 26, 2021. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Noxious Weed Control Authority Board about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to our first resolution, resolution authorizing the county weed superintendent to sign and serve notice on behalf of the Douglas County Noxious Weed Control Authority. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is the presentation and approval of the Douglas County Noxious Weed Control Authority's 2122 Annual Reports for the Nebraska Department of Agriculture. And here with us today is our expert, Michael Reed. Good morning.
Hi. Good morning, Chair Borgeson, and Board members, and to everyone here and watching on Zoom today. As Commissioner Borgeson mentioned, I'm the Noxious Weed Control Superintendent. I work at Douglas County Environmental Services. I have served as the county's weed superintendent since 2007. Ellen, at the clerk's office, and I were visiting, that we must enjoy what we do. We're both started around the same time. And things have changed dramatically in my world since I started in 2007. I want to focus today on the weed management area and talk to you commissioners and to the public about what that is. And basically, my job as weed superintendent, I have the responsibility by state law to survey all lands, survey all acres in Douglas County for noxious weeds. That includes those acres over the streams in this county, which would be the Missouri, Elkhorn, and Platte River. And so that's a very big task, because those state-designated noxious weeds have a big impact on the waters of our state. They can have a big impact on property as well. Where you have-- Missouri River and Platte River are very different. The Platte River, which I'll focus on today, has those sandbars, and those sandbars can easily become homes for weeds. You have establishment of those weeds, and then eventually, trees get established on those islands, and they become a problem for stream flow, ice jams, and flooding, problems for habitat, for endangered species, and our bird species in Nebraska. And so the Lower Platte Weed Management Area was started in 2002 to address aquatic weeds, which were a new phenomenon at the time in Nebraska. That was 20 years ago. And to manage noxious weeds on a landscape level. So this weed management area has a border of Columbus, Nebraska, and the other border is the Missouri River, where the Platte empties into the Missouri River. Currently, it's a 10-county weed management area, an interlocal between the counties, was signed in 2002, and it was renewed by this board in 2018 in partnership with Lancaster County, is now the administrator for our weed management area. And in the coming months, we're going to be adding Washington County to this weed management area as well, because, as I mentioned, the times have changed. These species have moved not only from the Platte River, they're also on the Elkhorn River. And so Washington County will be a good addition. It's another superintendent like myself. The superintendents lead this group. The weed management area allows all of these counties to apply for grant funds as a group and apply that work to the rivers and to that river basin. And it assists the landowners in that area. The landowners have the responsibility for controlling noxious weeds on their property. And it's a shared approach between the landowners, the natural resource districts, and those grant funds, which I mentioned. And I'll go into that slide here in a little bit. But it's a shared responsibility. Landowners have a piece of it. The NRDs contribute $100,000 a year. The Lower Platte South, Papia, Missouri, NRD, and Lower Platte, Lower Platte North, NRD, all contribute to that project every year. So this slide shows here that the proportion that Douglas County puts into the project annually this last year, my office puts in dues, puts in dues to the Lower Platte Weed Management Area, and also some contractor funds to do some groundwork on the river. That's roughly $5,000 that Douglas County contributes directly, and that everything except for the dues income is reimbursed back to the general fund. So the contractor funds, roughly $4,800 in contractor funds I use on the river, that goes directly back into the general fund. And so my investment is $350 in dues income, and that's multiplied by the state of Nebraska funding from the Nebraska Legislature. LB 1038 in 2016 appropriated $1 million for use for weed management areas on waters of the state. And so the Lower Platte Weed Management Area has obtained grant funding since 2016. This last year, it was $43,000. And so I wanted to talk about just what a great story that is, because it not only helps the county, but it helps all of your constituents as well to manage these weeds on the 120-mile stretch. It's a big stretch. You're able to use contractors on that whole stretch. It lowers the cost for all the landowners. If landowners wanted to undertake this themselves, it would be very costly. I also wanted to point out, given the nature of the pandemic the last couple of years, the counties and the natural resource districts have elected not to collect that cost share from the landowners the last two years. And so the landowners have not had to, have not been obligated to pay their 50% cost share for control work on the rivers, which will be appropriate. And we'll evaluate that going forward. But there was enough grant funding last year so that the cost share was not 50% this last year. So LB 1038, which I have on this slide, appropriated $1 million in 2016. There's currently a bill in the legislature right now, LB 805, which Senator Hughes has introduced. He also introduced LB 1038. What LB 805 will do is appropriate $3 million, an increase from the $1 million statewide. And currently, there's projects going on all over the state. I went down to the legislature last week and testified positively in favor of LB 805. In previous years, since 2016, that funding has been cut by appropriations. There's some tough budget times. I understand that. But we're trying to maintain these accomplishments we've already achieved with the landowners and taxpayers of the state. And so consistent funding is needed, and I was in favor of the increase in funding, because it was cut all the way down to $250,000 for statewide projects at one point. So this increase to $3 million shows commitment from the legislature to the waters of the state in preserving and maintaining those accomplishments. With that, I'll take any questions that you have.
Thank you. Mike, Commissioner Friend?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Mike, for the information. We haven't got a chance to meet yet, and it was-- It's long overdue. I should have probably talked to you at least once this year. I'm sorry about that. Mike, how many-- I was going through some of this stuff last night, and I couldn't necessarily track it down, and it's probably because I didn't know where to look. How many weed control authorities, based on the Nebraska revised statute, that forced the establishment of these authorities? How many are there? Is it based on NRD?
So the weed superintendents like myself?
Yeah. How many weed control authorities populate the state of Nebraska? Is it eight?
It's as many as there are counties.
Okay, so 93 of them.
93. Each county has the responsibility to employ weed superintendent. Some counties and smaller, smaller counties may share a superintendent, or these positions may be part-time positions in other counties.
So it's a semi-funded, it's a semi-funded, state-funded mandate to every county in the state?
Yeah.
And you broke this down. I didn't write it down. We're going to lose how much based on appropriations this year, potentially?
Oh, this year, this year, Senator Hughes, with more money being available this year, has elected to increase the funding from $1 million to $3 million statewide for these projects.
Okay, so what percentage is Douglas County being funded by the state? Is it 80%, 90%? I mean, how much are we getting from them to take care of these issues that could be caused, you know, outside of our county, right?
Right, especially on the river systems.
Right.
And so, yeah, that money is matched. So roughly $43,000 the counties are getting this year, and it's matched by $100,000 from the natural resource districts. And so--
Okay, yeah.
What Douglas County's contribution would be, that $350 in dues, and then the almost $5,000 in contract funds, which are reimbursed back to the general fund.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, no other-- oh, Commissioner Rogers?
Mike, I'm just curious. So based on some of these proposed water projects that have been announced through ARBIT, do you see, how would any of those affect us or affect what you all are doing in that respect?
Sorry, what was the last part? How do they affect--
How would you see them affecting just the whole Lower Platte, the makeup? What do you see, I guess, happening in this region with some of those proposed water projects other than the one between Omaha and Lincoln?
Oh, right. I haven't had a chance to look at that proposed reservoir. The Platte River has a stream flow, very fluctuating stream flow. And so if that can enhance the stream flow of the Platte River, that's going to help the management of what we're doing with the weed management area. And so I don't know if that's the case. I know hearing from the natural resource districts and from the water utilities folks in Nebraska, they want to have these flows increase. And so hopefully, that's another part of the legislation, not only building that reservoir, but also being able to manage flows at a better level, because increased flows would help manage these species on the river.
Okay, seeing no other lights. Do we have a motion to approve the report and adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, Mike. Good to see you. With that, do we have a motion to reconvene as the Douglas County Board of Commissioners? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Coming out of recess and reconvening. There we go. Thank you. Motion passes seven to zero.
And could you do roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, January 11, 2022, and Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process-- And item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, January 25th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is a consent agenda, items A through K. Is there a motion to adjourn? I mean, a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, we did the recognition and proclamations. Next, citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Yes, I do.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chair, and appreciate your time. Hello, Douglas County Commissioners. I'm Andrew Sullivan of 7748 Western Avenue. We've all been impacted by COVID in unique and personal ways. However, this crisis has been mismanaged at every level from end to end. There's decades of evidence that masks simply do not work against an airborne virus. By their actions, many of the Douglas County Health Boards seem to agree as they do not show up in face-to-face meetings. Some are flat out absent. I hope Commissioner Rogers, who's present in the board, will address this. As for the mask mandate, it has polarized Omaha communities and groups and organizations and resulted in mass cancellation of events and a stampede of sales to Sarpy County. An airborne mask goes through a mask. On the heat of the breath, flows to the ceiling just like smoke. It cools and descends and affects other people. Some will state surgeons wear masks, but surgeons do so because there are thousands of pathogens which can infect an openly cut body. However, the masks are far more likely to prevent the surgeon's chewing gum from ending up in the patient. Many are alarmed at the rise of COVID cases in January and are stunned to learn over 27,000 vaccinated people ended up coming down with COVID in Douglas County, but not me. Many of the medical status do not understand vitamin deficiencies are a cofactor for COVID and other respiratory infections. Our bodies mostly receive vitamin D from the sun, not diet. Our immune systems need vitamin D to function properly. We need more vitamin D as we age. When days grow short, the nights grow long, and people move inside because of the cold, they will be vitamin D deficient. Yet to date, none of the COVID funds have been used to tell people or the medical community about vitamin D deficiencies from what I'm able to determine. Finally, we are catastrophically ignorant in the way we treat respiratory viruses. Many people will wait days upon suffering symptoms before doing anything. And when they do take action, they use medication which only treats the symptoms and not the illness. Treatment needs to take place at the onset of symptoms with, and not, sorry, lost my train here. Treatment needs to take place at the onset of symptoms with something which attacks virus activity. There are nasal sprays with steroids which will disrupt the virus replication and end the illness. In fact, there are numerous treatments which can disrupt the virus infection at the onset of symptoms, but we hear very little about them. No funds have been allocated to research such matters. In the end, the hospitals suffer from an influx of ill people. I hope you review and improve how we address respiratory infections. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andrew. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Couple of different comments, but first of all, in regards to the mask ordinance, it's quite confusing. And I think some places in there, it implies that when you're seeking government services, such as I am right now, that the mask is not required, so I'm not going to wear it. Call me out of order if you wish. The next item is the rules of order. I guess I missed that on the agenda already. If you leave the room to go to the restroom or something, you might miss something. So citizens should be aware that they should stay in chamber. Next is the Open Meetings Act. I find it interesting that the Open Meetings Act copy of it is out front today. I might be mistaken, but I don't remember ever seeing a copy of it on the desk out there where a citizen could get to it instead of going over there and interrupting the process. You always refer to it, but a citizen doesn't really feel like going over there and getting on camera and disrupting your conversations. The other thing is legislative action, which I'll talk more in depth later, so please don't cut me off. Even the state of Nebraska now is playing around with new ways to limit citizen involvement and petitioning their government. I have asked before to have the rules of order and things put on the agenda because you do not want to, you never do. And I don't think I can argue individually with each one of you in your own offices in order to petition you about certain items. The intent of citizen involvement and petitioning their government is not to restrict that severely. In other words, we should be able to talk to all of you at one time instead of going to knock on somebody's door that's not my commissioner and be told, well, we're too busy, go talk to your own commissioner or your own councilman. And it's me against seven of you anyway. So we should be able to, not only at the voting booth, but in these chambers, be able to express in our own words, so you hear them, what we're about and what we want. Because we are the electors, not some 501(c)(1) that get time at the podium as presenters so that they can maybe have 10 minutes at the first and then 10 minutes at the last, but the citizen only gets five or less if they don't get cut off. So that's a little bit disparaging for citizens in order to petition. So I'm asking, since I maybe missed the rules of order thing, that having been denied to have it put on the agenda, I think, is restricting citizens, not just me. It needs to get on the agenda. If I did miss it, sorry, you should have delayed it until it does get in on the agenda so citizens can tell you what kind of input they should be able to have. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Can you come down to the podium, please? And then state your name and who you're with?
Who am I with?
Yourself.
I am with myself. My name is Chris Hasbrook, Waterloo, Nebraska. Hello, Mary Ann.
Hi.
I came here to speak about the Douglas County mask mandate. Is this now the time to do so?
Yes, because it's not on the agenda.
Excellent, thank you. In that case? Sorry. Realize there are mandates. Good morning, guys.
Good morning.
My name is Chris Hasbrook. As I said earlier, Waterloo, Nebraska. I'll begin. In November of 2021, four Brown University scientists penned a scientific review with help from the consulting firm Resonance. They collected cognitive data from 605 children from March 2020 on to June of 2021. Their study found that during the pandemic, there was a 23% drop in scores measuring a child's intelligent quotient. Additionally, they found similar dips in the same span in regards to developing children's ability to communicate, both verbally and through subtle facial cues. These drops are measured on average of 128, 19 in 2020, and 70 in 2021. The nonverbal cues experienced a similar drop from a mean score of 105 in 2019 to 120 in 2020, and then around 80 in 2021. What caused this drop? It's the mask. Some of it could be at-home learning, but I believe it's the mask. Ralston, OPS, District 66, all have mask mandates. The parents of these districts have failed their children. Millard, Elkhorn, DC West, at the urging of their loving, active parents, made masks optional. That's the difference between love and neglect. What Dr. Lindsay Hughes has done is crush the efforts of these loving parents at the urging of the far-left Teachers Association. I believe Hughes did this because she cares more about politics than she cares about children. Her actions are causing direct harm to the children of Douglas County. I urge you to reverse the Douglas County mask mandate immediately. Federalism, not fascism, is the way forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Dan Ash, Douglas County. Just to clarify or give an explanation, I can't remember exactly when. It was sometime in November, though, we started putting, you know, the clerk's office will set various things on the table out front. We've been doing that forever. And I want to say November, we just started putting four or five copies of the Open Meetings Act out there as well. So it is relatively new, but we have been doing that for several weeks now. So just to give an explanation, as to a comment made earlier, as to something new they started noticing out there, and that's where it came from. We just started doing that several weeks ago.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak about an item not on the agenda? All right, we'll move to presentations. Our first and only is the COVID-19 update and COVID-19 vaccination plan update presented by Dr. Lindsay Hughes. Good morning.
Good morning. You can't respond to anything that was said, though.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
All right, let's dive right in for today. We continue to sit in the high transmission category here in Douglas County. However, we are starting to see perhaps a bit of progress. So starting out with our usual graph that we like to look at, we're currently sitting at 1,486.5 per 100,000 for a 7-day total for cases. Obviously, that is still incredibly high. However, it does appear that we're starting to come down off of, hopefully, the peak of this Omicron spike. That is great news. However, I also want to be clear that that is still much, much too high. And, you know, the impact that that has on the community, especially in terms of hospitalizations, school, trying to keep businesses with people employed and showing up for work continues to be a challenge here. A little bit here on who is getting COVID in our community. We'll look at about the last month or so. You can see that we've had growth in every age group in terms of who is contracting COVID right now. But you'll notice that we have had a significant growth from the beginning of the year until now, especially in our pediatric population. We also have more COVID pediatric hospitalizations right now than we've had throughout the pandemic. So I'll get to that here in just a minute. But I do want to just highlight that we have certainly continued to see growth in our 0 to 19-year-old age groups. We also, if you kind of look at the different colors of the bars here, you'll notice, too, that our young adult population continues to have a pretty high proportion of cases as well. So basically, between 20 and 39 years of age, that turquoise and light blue is those younger to mid-aged adults. So we're continuing to see a lot of cases that are circulating in our schools right now. And I know that that's put quite a bit of a strain on our school systems, also in terms of trying to keep teachers and substitutes in our classrooms. That's been a very big challenge over the past couple of weeks, from what I'm understanding. Test positivity continues to be high, starting to come down maybe just a little bit, but we're continuing to see high numbers of people test. So we're currently at 27.2% for that test positivity. So that continues to be extremely high. In terms of hospitalizations, you'll see this graph over to the left. This is the count of COVID patients. So you can see we've actually exceeded anywhere that we have any number for the entire pandemic. So our previous high point was, I believe it was 440. Here, let me get the exact number for you. So on 11/23/2020, our high was 445. So that's this little dot you're seeing right here. As of yesterday afternoon, we had 452 patients in our hospital systems here in the Omaha Metro. So one thing that I wanted to just remind the Commissioners of is that when you see your numbers increasing or decreasing, you're typically going to see that trend reflected in hospitalizations a week or two later. So the fact that we're just starting to come off the spike is great, but I would anticipate that we're still going to have high numbers of hospitalizations for some time, given that we're still well over 1,000 cases per 100,000 for 7-day total. Our capacity is looking somewhat better. I don't know what all variables have gone into that, but we are sitting today under 85, or I believe 83%, 84%, I'm sorry, and then 83% for adult ICU. However, we currently have 20 pediatric COVID cases that are hospitalized right now, which is certainly concerning. If you think back, it was pretty typical for me to be reporting, you know, nine, 11, about half of what we're seeing now. So that is something that we want to make sure we're keeping a close eye on. And then we currently have 46 ventilators in use. So it appears that our ventilator usage has somewhat stabilized, although that's still, I think, too many. In terms of deaths, I haven't received my death report today, but we do continue to add a number of deaths every day. 976 is our total deaths for Douglas County so far for the pandemic, so closely approaching 1,000. They continue to be predominantly those who are unvaccinated. Those who are vaccinated almost always are over the age of 65 and/or have other health conditions that are impacting their immune systems. All right. That underscores the need for us to continue to vaccinate as much as possible. So we do continue to have some breakthrough cases, which we knew, you know, as we have learned more about Omicron, we knew that we would see more breakthrough cases because the efficacy does drop a little bit with the Omicron variant. However, it still does a very good job of protecting against that severe illness and death. So while our breakthrough rate has gone up to 7.5%, and that's the total number of breakthrough cases, or the total number of people who have been fully vaccinated against COVID-19 and then gone on to develop a positive COVID test later, even though that has grown, our deaths from COVID-19 and those who are vaccinated has remained very stable. .02 is where we're currently sitting with that. And that really has remained very low throughout. So a little bit more about vaccine efforts here in the community. I think last time I was up here, we had already reached over a million total doses administered. So again, that's a great milestone, and we continue to push forward to get even more doses out there. Right now, 69.3% of all of our Douglas County residents have had at least one dose. Hope that holds for two doses as well, as people continue to come in and get their vaccines, that those who've had that one dose will make sure to get their second dose as well. You can see here that 65% of our community is fully vaccinated, and that includes all residents, including those who are not eligible for vaccine. 70.2% of our eligible population has been fully vaccinated, which is fantastic news. We'd like to see that go even higher. We know that with this particular We'd like to see that go even higher. We know that with this particular virus, 70% is not quite where we would want to be for herd immunity. We would like that to be a bit higher. So we're going to continue getting that out as much as we possibly can. If we break this down into our pediatric population, since we are seeing a number of cases there right now, 64.3% of our adolescents are fully vaccinated right now. We'd love to see that be even higher. And then 27.3% of our five-to-11-year-olds are fully vaccinated. And that number definitely needs to be a lot higher in order to really tamp down on the transmission that's happening, especially in our schools. All right. So if you want to get a visual of what that looks like and who's vaccinated where, there are no surprises here. Sorry about, sorry all the back and forth there. You can see that this hasn't changed significantly. We're still continuing to see our highest rates of vaccinations within that Elkhorn and Bennington corridor. And we continue to see lower rates the further west or the further east you go. So we do continue to concentrate many efforts around vaccination in that eastern corridor, north to south. We continue to look for partners that we can partner with to get the vaccine out and to ensure that we're getting coverage more equitably than what is showing here. And then in terms of where we're actually seeing cases of COVID, I'll show you that, too, because that's always interesting next to those vaccination rates. So you can see currently we're having diffuse, basically diffuse cases. And actually, I think I might go back another one. There we go. This is the most up-to-date. So you can see that it's pretty much everywhere right now. Testing, you know, right before Christmas really ramped up, and we've continued to see high levels of people wanting testing. And so a lot of our efforts right now have been around trying to make sure that we're getting testing into the community as much as possible. That does include home tests. So as you are aware, the federal government did launch a program a couple of weeks ago where basically anybody is able to call or go online to order for free home tests for each household. So that continues to operate. I haven't heard a lot in terms of how well that's operating, probably because there's a lag time between when those orders go in, in about seven to 12 days when those go out. So I think it's still early enough on that we're not quite sure. We also are working with other partners in our community for testing. So obviously, NOMI still continues to operate, and they have expanded to a couple of different sites other than their originals. We also are working with people like Total Wellness, who have the capacity to expand testing fairly readily or more readily than others may. And so we're ensuring that, you know, that we work with them to find places for them to set up to do testing as well. We also have a program where if people are unable to get out to get tests for, you know, if they're unable to drive, or they have other transportation issues, or they're homebound, they can actually call to the department. And we do have a small amount of tests that we can actually deliver out to them. So we continue to try to push those tests out. We're also trying to look at how we might be able to procure more tests. It's extremely challenging right now to get them in bulk. I had, I think, 500 ordered a couple of weeks ago, and it was very difficult to get those. So we're continuing to wade through that. And with that, I think that I am ready for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hughes. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you for this. The positivity rate at 27.2%, looking on here on the dashboard, that's an all-time high, right, for us?
Yes. Well, actually, if you look back, if you look back a week or two, we had up by 30%. It was almost 30%, 29.2%.
I'm sorry, say again?
If you look back to the eighth, we were actually at 29.2%. So we're down slightly from that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Regarding the positivity factor, now that we have home testing, does that contribute to the fact that we're picking up more cases and that would increase this positivity factor?
Not probably significantly, because those home tests are not reported to the Health Department necessarily. We do get people who call and would like to report those, but there's not a requirement, if you will, for citizens with a positive home test to report those. You know, if a lab or a facility has a positive test, those are required to be reported. But that's not true for individual citizens who are testing at home. So we don't capture all of those. So while this is what we're seeing here, it's likely that there are a lot more positives out there than we know about.
And the federal free home test program just came online. You have information out there on that, so people can go and order their free tests?
We do. And if you call our COVID line, they can also explain, you know, basically how to access that. But it's as simple as going on a website or making a phone call and requesting those.
Great. Just for folks watching, you can go online to covidtest.gov, where you can call 1-800-232-0233 to get a free test packet. I think it's four per household, something like that.
Correct. The current limit is four per household.
The breakthroughs on the dashboard and today's testimony are at 7.5%. On January 19th, we received an email from Karen Bush, the HR Director, that said breakthroughs of vaccinated employees are 68.7%. Were you enlightened on that?
How do you resolve that with this? So that's a, it's a smaller number, obviously, that you're working with. So Douglas County employees are kind of like a little subpopulation, if you will. What you're seeing here on the website is basically the total population and also the ones that we know about. So, you know, we're not necessarily going to know about every single breakthrough case that happens. These are just the ones that we have a reported positive test.
Sure. But I mean, that is kind of concerning that our employee group has 10 times the breakthrough rate of the general population. Any idea why that would be?
More people are catching COVID because it's much, this particular variant, I cannot talk today, I'm really sorry, is so much more transmissible. And until recently, I believe, you know, some of our mitigation efforts were not enforced necessarily within the employees. So probably a lot more mixing without proper mitigation efforts in place.
One minute.
So many, if not most, of those people would be in this campus nearby. And would it be helpful to put a dent in that transmission thing and consequently the breakthrough number if everybody wore masks all the time when they're here?
I believe so, yes. And that's based on a lot of research that we've gathered.
Just one editing thing. On some of the maps, and I know this is difficult, and I don't know if you can, you know, increase the size or whatever, they don't have all the ZIP codes. I noticed this because they don't have my ZIP code on a couple of the maps. And it's squished in there with other ZIP codes, so it might be an editing problem, but.
Yeah, I think the further you go in, the better it is. So this is the cases one. Yeah, I think if you zoom in, you'll be able to see the ZIP codes a little bit better. It's a little hard to display that here, because then I have to move the map around.
Commissioner Boyle?
Thanks again for everything you do. I completely support everything as a hospital worker myself, and I couldn't ask for better leadership from your standpoint. And just a couple of comments to start. One is, numbers might be decreasing, first of all, because of the mask mandate. I mean, when you think about it, that was implemented last week, and it takes just a couple of days for the virus to be transmitted. So over the past week, that could be one reason why the numbers are decreasing. So in my opinion, it's working. But I'm not naive to say that's the only thing that's helping. The other things that help, as someone who likes to get data from all over, is that just the natural course of disease means this could be slowing down. And then third, could be home testing. It could be just the fact that people aren't going to a center to get tested. They're doing it at home, and those aren't getting reported. So I think that those three things may contribute to why our numbers are going down. The reason why I think hospitalizations may also be going down is because we've gone into red phase at a lot of our hospitals, where we're not doing, I don't want to call them elective surgeries, but those surgeries that can be delayed are being put off for a month or so, so that we, so that we at the hospital can take care of the COVID patients and not take care of, say, the cancer patient who has to have her surgery delayed. So anyway, I think that's a reason why hospitalizations are going down, too. At my own hospital, just to put some statistics out there, every day or two, I get a report from my hospital system that tells me the number of people in the hospital from COVID or who have COVID and what their vaccination status is and whether they've been boosted. So at my hospital yesterday, of those that were hospitalized, 50% of them were unvaccinated. So that means 50% of them were. 70% of the people in the ICU were unvaccinated. So we went from 50% to 70% in the ICU, meaning 30% of the vaccinated are in the ICU. 85% of those on ventilators are unvaccinated. 85% of those on ventilators are unvaccinated. So we went from 50% of just being in the hospital to 85% of them being on a ventilator of those who are unvaccinated. That's what we're trying to do, is we're trying to make it so the sickest people are, if we can get everybody vaccinated, we can avoid 85% of the people being on ventilators. So it's the load on the hospital system. We're just trying to not, you know, masks will decrease spread of droplets, not eliminate spread of droplets. So we're just trying to slow it down so that we can handle these volumes. We're trying to flatten the curve. And I know that's a statement that was said earlier in the pandemic. But instead of these spikes, we just want to kind of flatten them so we can deal with them over time and have the staff to do it. So I'll get off my soapbox a little bit and now go on to just ask some other questions about, like, who should be getting tested at this point?
We recommend that anybody who's feeling under the weather should get tested. I mean, if you're having any symptoms that you, that, even if you just think, oh, it's just your typical winter cold. Could be, but it also could be COVID. And in order to prevent that from spreading to other people, it's important that you know what your status is. So, you know, if you're feeling under the weather, get a test. If you have a home test on hand, if you have symptoms, those home tests work pretty well. So go ahead and test. If you've been exposed, we also recommend that you get tested around day five after that last exposure occurs. And that way, if you happen to have caught it and are just not symptomatic yet, hopefully, we can pick up on that. So we continue to recommend testing for all of those. There are also recommendations to test before you're going out, you know, to big events or things like that. It's not a terrible idea. It's just not as accurate to use home tests in that way, because you don't know when your last exposure might have been.
One minute.
And you don't know, you know, some of those tests are less accurate if you haven't necessarily had an exposure or you're not feeling under the weather. So it's not bad to test. Just take it with a grain of salt and know, okay, well, there's always that possibility, which makes it important that, you know, we continue to use some of these other mitigation efforts that we have available to us until we get this, get our rates much further down.
So if there, I mean, we'd heard about shortages of tests and long lines and all that. So if it's obvious you probably have it because your family member was sick, should you still get tested?
Yeah, absolutely. If you have, especially a family member that's living with you that had COVID, your risk is much higher, because that is a very close contact, if you're living in the same household. So testing five days after that last exposure to them would be the best to do. So we typically look for 10 days at somebody who's symptomatic, so about 10 days after those symptoms started.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia?
Just a couple of quick questions, kind of on the topic of testing. I was wondering if you could speak to kind of those long lines that we mentioned briefly. There's been some accounts of people having to wait, you know, two and a half, three hours to get their test. I think a lot of those individuals are trying to go through the larger effort through NOMI, where, you know, you could drive up to these long lines and wait for your test, or to get tested, rather. Can you speak to those efforts? Have the lines kind of decreased? Was there maybe just a spike one week, you know, after the holidays with Omicron, but maybe those waits are getting better now? I'm not sure. Also, has there been any efforts to maybe expand testing so there's not so long lines? Kind of, can you speak to the pulse of that a little bit?
Yeah, I think it's gotten better. I am certainly hearing that, you know, not hearing as much of the issue around, you know, people sitting in lines for hours on end. I know that a lot of places now are doing it by appointment only, so that also kind of contributes to that, because you don't have masses of people who are essentially walking in for a test. So not that we don't have plenty of demand for testing. That's definitely still there. So yes, you know, I know NOMI worked on expanding their staffing so that they were able to do more tests for those coming in. We did have some challenges with cold weather, so the reagent that's used to process those tests has to be kept at a certain temperature. As you know, NOMI was basically an outdoor drive-through setup. And so we've been trying to assist in finding some indoor testing places so that, you know, we don't have these times when the weather is extremely cold and they have to essentially shut down their services for a day or two. So that's been something that we've been working through. And like I alluded to a little bit earlier, we're also working with other organizations within our community to expand testing there as well. So, you know, anytime we hear about, hey, we would like to offer testing, or we would like to do this, we try to have a conversation with them to see how we can best make that work. So it's a conversation that happens at least daily, if not multiple times daily.
Got it. Thank you. And final question related. I still get the periodic question of, you know, is the county looking to invest funds in more testing? Or are other entities looking to invest funds in more testing? And as I recall from a previous meeting recently, it's not necessarily a funding issue, because I believe you mentioned there is a fund at the federal level that places like NOMI and other testing sites can tap into for reimbursement of those efforts to do testing. Is that accurate?
It is. However, to procure those tests, you have to purchase the actual test kits. And so that is probably more what you've heard about in terms of trying to actually procure the tests themselves. And that can be a little bit difficult, just depending, and it's not necessarily a funding issue. It's really more of a supply issue. It's very difficult to actually find the tests in huge numbers. So, you know, you can get kind of small bulk orders, but getting hundreds of thousands would be very difficult, unless you went through the federal government to do so, which the county level doesn't typically do. That's usually a state function.
Got it. Thank you, Dr. Hughes.
You bet.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
Dr. Hughes, I was going to ask you a question. Where you're standing, no one's within eight foot of you right now.
Correct.
He's probably the closest. Sometimes when people come up to speak, if, you know, maybe we blocked off that first row, you'd be able to hear them more clearly sometimes. Do you still recommend, when you're right there, keep the mask on, anyone coming up?
I always do, because I personally believe that that's best practice to do that. And given, you know, that the transmission of Omicron is still very much happening, I do recommend people have their masks on when they're up here, especially since you can mic them.
Okay.
But that's a recommendation.
Yeah, I know that sometimes people can't quite hear them that are attending the meeting or through the television or whatever. They don't hear everything that's said now. Now, when Commissioner Garcia spoke with his mask on, it was as clear as could be. Sometimes it's not.
Right.
But I just thought I'd ask you. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Just, just another question. This goes back to just crystal ball issues again. So, with the, with the vaccines, I know that we hear that immunity has been waning over time. So, what, what's, what's the latest on that?
Get a booster. That's, that really has been the recommendation and continues to be so. We find that the booster really makes a big, big impact on, on people's ability to catch Omicron, essentially. So, yes, the original series, very important. We want everybody to get that. But we also want, if people, if they're outside of that six-month period, to get their booster. It's very important to do that. You can actually see in the research where, you know, the efficacy for Omicron drops for just that, that, uh, primary series, essentially. Still darn effective, but it does, it does drop somewhat. But then when you boost those, those people, that, that immunity really skyrocket. So, it's, it's just very important that people do that.
Do we, do we know, again, if we've just started rolling out the boosts a bit, boosters a bit? So, do we know if that immunity wanes over time? Or do we have enough time to figure that out?
Don't think we've had enough time to tell. There's been speculation both ways, that I've read, you know, from experts saying, you know, it could be that we need something annually for this. I've seen other experts saying, no, this booster should, should be enough. I think that there are a lot of variables we don't know about that can impact that, such as, you know, future variants. But so far, this, this is really, seems to be doing a good job, the booster does.
Yes. And you just mentioned what I was going to ask next is, this Omicron was a, a second variant, I think, we know about? And then do you know other, are there other variants that were, were, we were seeing yet? Or anything, I mean, of course, we're concerned about them. But do you think that will be the thing to dictate whether we need to get an annual vaccine, like a flu shot, versus this being, you know, three and done?
I think that is more than likely. So, as, as we go over the next year, you know, we're going to know more about people's immunity in terms of having had Omicron. We, we seem to know a lot more about immunity with, with the Delta, which is what really spurred originally the need for a booster. We're going to know more over the coming months, whether this is going to be something we need to, you know, address annually or periodically, or maybe, maybe every 10 years, like tetanus. That would be great, too. So, we're unfortunately still learning, is the answer. It would be great if we, if we just knew all of the answers and can move forward now. But when a virus is new to us and continues to change, that means that our learning has to change, too.
Yep. Agree, agree. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You bet.
All right. I see no other lights. Thank you, Dr. Hughes.
Thank you.
With that, we will move to committees. The first being the finance, the budget report as presented. Then the monthly fee reports for September and October and November are also available. We'll move down to criminal justice. We have one resolution to accept and approve the 2021 Douglas County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Paul Johnson, our emergency manager, is, I don't know if he was on the...
He's on.
He's on? Okay. Is there any, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Friend, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments for Paul? All right. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next is HR and the Civil Service Report as Presented. And then we do have a couple of legislative items that we'd like to support or oppose. The first one being the support of LB 908. This is actually our bill that was being sponsored by Senator McDonnell, and it is to provide additional requirements for virtual conferencing under the Open Meetings Act. This will include committee meetings or meetings that take no action are the ones that will be allowed, hopefully, under this legislation. And so, with that, I would ask for a motion to approve. On 908?
Yeah, comment on that slave.
On, are you wanting to comment on LB 908?
Legislative issues.
Okay, just wait then, because we'll, we're taking specific ones right now. When we get to other legislation, you can, I'll call you back up.
Okay. I'll make it on a video conference.
Okay, then that's now.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. My earlier remarks regarding citizen comments for Open Meetings Act and citizen petitioning in their government. You know, back in the old days, the original days, the king's people that weren't serving the citizens quite often got tarred and feathered. We, we don't do that anymore. We can only speak at these meetings, or hopefully. But I'd like to add something to my last board meeting for the comments. It has to do with legislative issues. It's regarding one that you probably are or are not aware of, and that is the LR 14.
Larry, this is LB 908. I ask that you wait till we get to other legislation.
But under the Open Meetings Act. Okay?
Larry, I'll ask that you wait till other legislation, because we're on LB 908.
Pending legislation. Okay. Virtual conferencing. One thing wrong with that is people sitting out there cannot see your expressions, probably, as we're talking. So, they lose the context. They may not hear everything either because of the mask. So, at a certain extent, video conferencing is a progressive way of limiting citizen involvement, because the guy sitting over there can flick that switch just like that. Oh, I'm sorry, that's a technical problem. And the citizen is shut up. The citizen is asked to be quiet, and the citizen is out of there without even an escort. So, I am against it. I think you should back off on expanding video conferencing for those reasons. It's for us. We are the bosses. We elect you. It's not for other people to tell you how to limit citizen involvement. And at that...
I wanted to talk about LR, the other legislation that you do or don't do not.
We're on 908.
So, I would like to come back to the podium, if there's an opportunity for that.
I told you, another legislation, yes. So, LB 908. Is there a motion to approve? There's a second? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. No other questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is LB 976. This is Senator Wishart's bill, and this is supporting the adoption of the Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic Act. This is an amazing opportunity to expand our behavioral health services and also to allow for the providers to get a increase in their payment. I was down in Kansas for the Nebraska, or National Association of Counties meeting, and Kansas has adopted this Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic concept. And it has, they have had very, very positive results on this. There's a lot of information on these, but these clinics, basically, if you sign up, and we do have some in Nebraska right now, that are kind of at a pilot stage, if you will. But when you sign up as a pilot with SAMPA, you have to provide certain services. And you can either provide those through this clinic or you can enter into agreements with providers in the community. But again, this is a excellent way to expand those services and reach those people with behavioral health services that we have not been able to. And so, with that, we are asking for support on LB 976. Is there a motion to support? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments on 976? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
The next one we will take up is LB 921. This is Senator Lathrop's bill, and this is Change, where sentences of imprisonment are served. And we are asking for a motion to oppose. Just in way of specifics, the, the felonies right now are divided into 10 classes. And what this bill would do is take Class 3, 3A, and 4 felonies and have those being, shall be served in county jails. We are working on trying to get a dollar amount on what this would mean. But just in numbers, sheer numbers alone, would put a total burden on our county jails, not just ours, but across the, the state. We did talk to Director Myers and Deputy Director Amber Redman about this, and they also agree that we should oppose this legislation. And so, with that, I would ask for a motion to oppose. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Get this, on the legislature's bill site, I don't see a fiscal note on there. I don't know.
That's what we're working on? We're working on getting those numbers.
There is no fiscal note.
No, we're getting, Commissioner, or Commissioner, Marcos is working with our staff to get our fiscal note on it.
I'm sorry. Marcos, relative to the legislature's fiscal office? The official fiscal note on this is not available?
No. I'm, Marcos San Martin, Douglas County Legislature. I am turning in a fiscal note today in working with Director Myers.
Okay.
Is that what you're asking of us? We, we do turn in a fiscal note, or at least a fiscal comment.
As you know, the process is that the state legislature has a fiscal office that gives the official fiscal note. There was a fiscal note on the last bill that we did on the site. There is no fiscal note on the site for this bill. And I think the hearing is...
The 27.
The 27.
It's this week? Yeah.
So, what you're saying is, they've requested information from us, which we have not submitted yet. Is that right?
That's correct. We will submit something today.
So, we don't know what the fiscal impact would be based on...
Not statewide. I, I don't know, I don't know any information statewide.
So, as best as you can tell from a county point of view, what would be the impact on Douglas County?
I, I'm working with Director Myers and, and Ms. Redman today. But it would be a significant detrimental impact to the county. We would have to expand capacity significantly to house those inmates locally. And so, that's the direction that I've been giving so far. And that was also the consensus with NACO. The, the, you know, the Nebraska Association of Counties, they're also opposing this bill due to that same impact. So, it would be significant, you know, significantly a detrimental cost to, to other local counties.
Okay. So, just to give us some kind of rough ballpark, would it be significant, like, in excess of $1 million a year to Douglas County?
I'll have to follow up with you.
I'm sorry?
I'll have to follow up with you, Commissioner. I, I don't have those, I don't have that exact estimate. But I, but I would say, you know, if, if, I mean, I guess the, the person to comment on that would be Director Myers and, and Ms. Redman. But, but I'm led to believe that it's significant means, yeah, significant, hundreds of thousands of impact, ultimately, because of capacity issues.
Thank you.
Commissioner Friend?
I, I don't have it, I don't have it in front of me. I'm, I'm trying to figure out what, if we were to, I'm trying to figure out exactly what this bill is. I know what it's attempting to accomplish, but what I'm trying to figure out is, between a Class 3, a 3A, and a Class 4 felony, how many of those individuals are detained or are incarcerated in this county, anyway? I can't, I said this a year ago, and you guys probably don't want to hear it again. I can't make determinations on, I can't just drive ideas from this seat down to a legislative body if I don't understand. Now, I had an opportunity to go out and look at 921, but Commissioner Kavanaugh brings up a really interesting point. You go into, you go into a hearing, you know exactly what the financial impact is going to be, or at least the determination has been made, what you think the financial impact is going to be to the state and what it's going to be to the county. Let me, let me sum this up. I, I'm not going to vote on this, because I don't know what the impact's going to be to us. And I also don't know what the impact, I don't, I don't know what the impetus is from the state. Now, shame on me for not being prepared to deal with LB 921 on this agenda. I was dealing with some other things, like everybody else. However, no excuse, I, I can't make a determination on this. I don't think you guys really care that much, but whether I do or not, but I, I can't oppose this legislation. I haven't, I know Steve Lathrop well. I know Senator Lathrop well. Probably should have called him and asked. I don't even know if it's prioritized. If it's not prioritized, this thing's got a snowball's chance. So, anyway, those are my thoughts. I, I just would rather not make a determination on this at this point, you guys. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was saying that's there, that I know that Senator Lathrop is probably one of the, definitely versed, I think, on the effects that this would have on counties overall. He's, he's been very attentive to that. But I assume that, I greatly assume he has some strategy in doing this. But I, I do think we need to go on record against it to exercise whatever that strategy is doing, and I'm assuming. There's somewhere he's going with this, because he's had this conversation several times with us. So, I, I do support us going there and opposing it. I'd just like to add, I think, cost, there's nothing sure. But I would think just to estimate, it would probably, probably have to be way somewhere close to the million, just because of the fact that you add cost of stay and then the other medical costs that's going to come associated with that, that we'd have to incur. We're going to be in that round. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I share Commissioner Friend's concerns, knowing the procedure of the legislature and how we will have an opportunity, once we have adequate information, to take an informed position on this. We don't have enough information at this point to say what, if any, dollar amount it will have. I think it's fair to say that there would be some dollar amount, but at this point, it doesn't appear that we're able to define that. We don't know if there's compensation from the state for any of that. There is a procedure in place whereby the state compensates the county for state-held prisoners. And it's always been kind of a bone of contention between the state and the county to get our fair share of that, which I'm entirely on the side of the, the state holding us harmless for housing their prisoners. I don't think that we run any great risk by holding off on a position. So, I'm going to abstain as well and just wait for the position to become clarified so that we can make a informed decision on this.
I do want to clarify, we get no money from the state for holding state prisoners. Jail reimbursement went away a long time ago. And regardless, there, it's just common sense that if they increase the number of cases that can be housed in your county jail, your costs are going to go up. And there is nothing in this bill that says the state will reimburse us for those additional incarcerated folks being held in our county jail. So, while we may not have the exact number, just the numbers of increasing due to a legislative bill that increases our population in our county jail, in my opinion, is enough to go on record opposing. on record opposing such an increase. In my opinion, this is basically trying to shift the responsibility to the counties with what the state is facing with overcrowding this in their prisons. I know there's talk about building a new prison, but if they can shift individuals, as they have in the past through LB 605, down to the counties, they're going to do it. And there was no money to take on those additional costs there either. And so I, again, think we need to go on record opposing this. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and that's a, that's a great point. We've been, the amount of time that I spent analyzing these things years ago and the amount of time I've spent analyzing them over the last year, it's a huge concern. I mean, what I haven't even gotten to, however, what I haven't even gotten to yet today is I'm not even exactly sure at this point what a Class III, a IIIa, and a IV felony is. Marcos, you have an answer for that? I mean, just, I didn't mean to sound like that. Marcos, do you know what a Class III, a IIIa, and a IV felony are?
There is a little bit of detail in the bill. It's, there are certain offenses that are, create, like as an example, the Class III is a maximum four years imprisonment. So, you know, there is a little bit of detail in the bill, at least as far as that. I can, I can definitely look up what those individual offenses are that would qualify.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't have them in front of me, all those, you know, all those crimes, I should say, you know, in front of me.
Okay, thank you. Finally, my, my concern, I guess, has been laid out, but I would, I would almost just not weigh on this, weigh in on this at this point, just because it's almost state-county, we're Robin Peter to pay Paul. It doesn't matter whose coffers are coming, they're coming out of. What we have to do is try to figure out how we can actually pay for it. If, if the state doesn't give us money, it doesn't matter. If somebody violates, if somebody commits a felony and they violate state law, if the state cannot incarcerate that individual, we have to. There's no other choice, and we're not changing that here. So at the end of the day, we'd have to figure out how we could actually pay for it. So, so you're, Chair Borgeson, your concerns, I share them, but I, I'm just to the point now where I, and again, shame on me, I'm blindsided, but there is no possible way, if I was sitting in the legislature, that I wouldn't have this discussion with Senator Lathrop, and it would go really deep. And right now, we're really at a high level, right? And I'd like to hear Commissioner Rogers' opinion on that, too. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Rogers?
To Commissioner Friend's point, at least if somebody legal can point out this thing about we have to house those, because I've never heard that, but I can say this significantly. If what you're saying is that there's four years tied to one of those, there is no doubt that that's going to impact the budget, because jails are billed for at the most probably two-year stay. I mean, at one point, I thought there was a number I had, and that was the average that we had. Somebody has to sit in our jail for four years. That facility's not built to do that. The medical costs would be substantial, and I think we've learned from the past, particularly with the Woodman issue, is that when we tried to play this game, the first thing they said was Douglas County hasn't done anything on this, so they, all right. I think this is a significant threat enough on where we are in that facility that even the inkling of daylight gives some breadth to this, and it needs to be kilt right now before it gets any momentum. And again, I want to repeat, Senator Lathrop's about as well-versed as anybody I know on the impact of this, and he's had those discussions. There's some strategy in it, and I think we go with the strategy and officially put this down, because I think there's some message trying to be sent to what they're doing with this. An additional four-year sitting in that, in our jail, will put us on the brink of a very different place. Thank you.
Commissioner Garcia?
I would agree with the statements from Commissioner Rogers. From, so we don't have a fiscal note, but the bill is in our binder, so we have some idea of the substance of what this would do. We definitely have an indication that this would increase our population. We already know that corrections is our largest cost within the county budget, so any idea of substantially increasing our population in any sense obviously should be of concern to us, but I also take issue with the fact that everybody in state and local government has access to a phone and an email account, and I, from what I'm hearing, it doesn't sound like Senator Lathrop contacted any of us regarding the idea of this bill and the substance of these changes. So as I've kind of said in the past on other topics, I always promote collaboration and communication between government entities, so we can co-design these kind of changes together and really walk forward on these kind of changes together. I know it's ideal thinking in many circumstances, but the fact that we really were not consulted nor worked together for this bill, and also the fact that it's a threat to increase our population, increase our budget expenses when it's already the hugest part of our budget, the largest part of our budget. For that reason, I will oppose today, though of course I, and I'm sure others, are always open to talking to any state senator about ideas in, related to these topics. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Marcos or Patrick, did you have any?
My only comment for the commissioners was, was just to reiterate that, you know, the hearing is this week. It's on Thursday, so if we, if the board ends up not taking a position, you know, we won't be on record at the hearing with any position. NACO has, I mean, you know, so, and I just wanted that to at least be clear.
Well, and I actually was going to make the same comment that Commissioner Rogers did, is we've been dinged more than once, not just Woodman, for not being Johnny-on-the-spot at a hearing to let them know what our position is, and this, again, just in the sheer language of allowing those felonies to serve their time in a county jail, is going to increase not only our population, but that directly increases our cost. And so again, with that, I think we need to go on record at this time to oppose this. But Commissioner Garcia, you're right, further conversation is always on the table to be had, and we're willing participants with that. So with that, no other comments on LB 921. Is there a motion to oppose?
I have Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Morgan as the motions second.
Oh, okay, thank you, sorry. With that, please vote.
Commissioners Friend and Kavanaugh abstaining, all their commissioners voting yes.
With that, the other legislation, Larry?
Permission to read my submission there this morning. It's in regards to legislation that is still pending at the state, but it affects every, every one of us in the United States of America. It's called LR 14, and it's about convention of states. Unfortunately, people do not understand convention of states, even our legislators. So I'm going to read this. I have sent this to them, asked for it to be included in their testimony also. Some of this might surprise you. LR 14, I received only one confirmation of my earlier email on January 10th for inclusion in the record of testimony, and that, and on amendments to LR 14. So please add the following, or as a revision to the record. First, I find that the new rules on citizen involvement, the Second House, that is, in Nebraska, to be, in reality, unconstitutional under both the state constitution and the U.S. Constitution. Those rules being restrictive of the electors, state constitution calls us the electors, rights and ability to petition our government, particularly when neither body seems to know or understand either document, meant for citizens' rights, restricting government, not citizens' rights. So the Open Meetings Act is also apparently unconstitutional. As many government bodies are using it as their way of getting around the intent of even its supposed law. You can read that. Which, as with other documents, are for the citizens, not for the legislators. I find that government bodies such as the Douglas County Board, Omaha City Council, the bodies across the state are lobbying against citizens, often following guidelines, even draft legislation that is written or suggested to them by outsiders as so-called best practices for their lobbying efforts, not mine, to achieve their agendas, not the citizens. I've written, bailed a Douglas County Attorney and a Nebraska Attorney General regarding this. I have appealed to this body to be put on the agenda, and without much success in either case. I don't believe citizens should have to file suit to get performance on the Attorney General, or the county attorney shall enforce the Omaha, the Open Meetings Act. That's right there in the Open Meetings Act. And your citizens, either one of you, could ask them to enforce the Open Meetings Act, if you understood it. Next, after watching the debates on LR 14 and amendments in the legislature in the last few days, I am disgusted by the lack of knowledge and the intent of our progressive senators to defeat it as a constitutional convention, not using the falsity of arguments from outside groups, such as those mentioned previously, the Convention of States organization, open cause, et cetera. But even now, Justin Wayne, on the television, on the video of that day, has inserted the tenants of CRT into the debate yesterday, which I don't remember which day that was, but it was Tuesday or Wednesday or Thursday, for racist equity and disparity in reparations on the record. Some clarity and responsibility for the legislation to honor their oaths is in order. It was quite ridiculous, you should watch it. He needs to be censored for that tactic. Apparently, he, Hanson, Kavanaugh, McCallister, et cetera, have changed their tactic from defeating LR 14 outright to inserting more frivolous falsities, some at the apparent, at apparently the behest of the Omaha World Herald, had an article in a newspaper, it's open, it's out there in the public. American Legislative Exchange Council, the Eagle Forum, Common Cause, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, come marching in here and down to the State House to defeat our state senators' efforts. The founding fathers, the constitution, and even Article V itself says nothing, implies nothing about another constitutional convention. Please read it and understand it. There will be no constitutional convention unless those people in Washington do that. The intent of the founding fathers was to let the state also have a way to amend the constitution, not change it.
Time, thank you, Larry. Thank you, Larry. Time. Thank you, Larry. We do have need for an executive session, and that is for labor negotiations. Is there a motion to go into executive session for labor negotiations? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers.
Jim? To reconvene and adjourn? Is there a second to reconvene and adjourn? Commissioner Morgan, please vote.
All right.
You're voting yes? All right. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting yes? Well, you can't. I gotta wait, I gotta wait for Commissioner Friend, so if you want to, you can. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Friend is absent. We are adjourned at 11:01 a.m.